We're not on over.
Yeah.
Okay. I was gonna tell me Jackson's story. But not right now.
Oh, there's a light going in there?
Yeah.
I think they pushed it. I thought I heard it pushed it.
Think they pushed it back a little.
They pushed it back a little.
But I don't know exactly when that's gonna be.
But it's still gonna start this year?
So they...
They say.
Could be. It could be a year.
Okay.
That's what I heard, but I don't take any of this fact when they...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I was just curious looking at the town when things are something like that.
Usually they do. Usually they have a meeting, but they come before in public.
Kind of like they did with the... They have such a...
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're due.
I was just gonna say, I think I just heard of so... You should be... It's for each. She had me out of her mouth. Okay, I'll second. You're good. You're good. So we're starting out with the salary sheet that you have to last.
Don't worry about it.
Hey, Amber.
Hi. So I thought we'd start with the salaries, 'cause last time, hand it amount and give you guys some time to digest it and put your thoughts together. The only thing I noticed I didn't put in here was for bonuses, for incentives, for the town manager, for when they do the reviews. So we'll just keep that in mind as we go through. Any thoughts that you guys came up with, or... Changes you wanna make, or...
I do have... Yeah, but I thought I had seen... There was a thousand dollars put in.
That was for... So there was a thousand dollars for employee recognition.
Okay.
Um, which is across the board. And we had talked about doing a... An amount for the town manager, but we weren't quite there yet because we had just written the personnel policy. And we didn't have the review process ready, which they're out now. They're due at the end of the month. So that's working forward as well.
I had mentioned last time about the select board salaries. And I would like to propose that... Sorry for rushing the paper. I'm trying to get to stay flat. Um, I would like to propose twenty-five hundred for the select board and twenty-eight hundred for the chair.
I'm gonna tell you that I think the only way that we can make a difference in that whole line at all is to decrease the number of selection. I don't... We did give back and bring it down a little bit. And I know we say, none of us do it for the money. I'm gonna tell you that for what's happening for my personal life right now and in my... In my work, I really... I don't... I don't wanna give up any of it. I'll give up some, I guess, to do, but to really make a difference in this whole giant budget, that would be my... My answer would... My answer would be to get rid of... To get rid of two-ten, cut that, no. Put our board back down to three from five, which is what we were before we had... We decided to go to a board of five and a charter back in... All those years ago when we started that. I don't, in this process, I just don't, this whole budget, I don't see it making a huge difference. The money does come in handy to me. I can say that it's very...
I don't think we can do that as part of the budget. I think that's a charter change.
And I think it is too, but I'm just saying that's the only way I can see.
Yeah, I hear you. I just wanna be... I just wanna clarify.
We'd have to... We'd have to get them amended.
Yeah, that was... That was really discussed at the charter in depth. And I believe it was Rod Hooper who really had a... Had a great take on why to leave it at five. And that's why we left it there. And Jessica was there as well. As in agreeing with Rod, if you recall.
I do. I don't remember the exact details of the conversation. I just think it was a... It was more geared towards the different perspectives. I hear what Vicki's saying as well. I think we can do something there. I just... I know that when I started on the board, there was no town manager. And I know Dave was also a board member when there was no town manager.
Yeah.
And I can confirm that the amount of emails and phone calls and all the things that were happening before town manager were, like, far exceeded what we are doing as a board. I can speak for myself, far exceeded what I was doing now, so...
Well, I'm sure maybe reducing it by a smaller amount might be agreeable?
My concern is not for myself, as the amount. But I understand that, you know, people are in different positions in their budget of their own lives. So, I mean, I... I tend to, you know, feel for... For Vic, if that's something that, you know, helps, then, you know, in two years, when a few of us are gone, I would hate to stymie somebody from stepping up because they may not be able to afford it. That's, you know, I go back and forth. You know, I... I think it should be a completely volunteer position, but I understand you're only gonna get certain people that might be able to do that on a consistent basis. So if you wanna include more people, you gotta include the people that may not be able to afford to basically donate all their time for zero, because it does cost money to be active, you know? I think with the stipend, you... You also have the ability to be on, you know, whether it's different committees or... You know, you'd be able to spend a little more of your time and be, in a sense, compensated for it and not have a hardship of, you know, lack of funds at the end of the month. So I can go either way, but I think it's a... I think it's a great gesture, but I think in the long run, not so much for us. We could be hurting the future of anybody else stepping up.
I see the potential in that, that part of it, yes. My thinking in that was, we're on here. We're talking about stipending... That's a word? I don't know. The planning board. And basically, that's gonna be at a minimum wage rate. Is that what I'm gathering, you know, the minimum wage?
What I did to get it started was I took what we had, converted it from the hours that we were using and for the budget, and then switched it over into stipends. So it basically comes out at this point in time as minimum wage.
Okay, so that's basically what I did in my...
That's how you figured that?
Yes.
That's how you came up with that number? So that swallows up the planning board, so there's not really an increase, is that what?
No.
Does it include the planning?
No, I'm not including the in-planning board. I'm talking about using the same plan for the stipend of the planning board, for the select board. So if the planning board is gonna be minimum wage stipend, the select board would be minimum wage stipend.
Exactly. How many hour... What is... Is that based on a number of hours?
Oh, I just used my own crazy math.
No, I was just curious how the... How it was...
So let's see, this is...
We were paying the planning board hourly at one point, but they were going over budget consistently each year. And so, and then just kind of, I looked at a record of, like, how... I wanted to see if they were getting a lot of site plan reviews. Maybe their workload was increasing. And I found it really wasn't increasing. So we kinda, the CEO had recommended a stipend option. So we took basically what we've been budgeting each year and, you know, what we know they do for hours and kinda just making that stipend model. It's really not a significant change from this year's. They're pretty much gonna be getting the same as what they've put in for in the past, but they'll get it in a stipend format. So that's how we came up with that for the planning board.
I'm sure.
Yes.
I think it makes a lot of sense to use a stipend as opposed to try and keep the track of the hours for planning board, personal experience. But I took a look at what I'm receiving compensation for the past couple of years on the planning board. Five twenty-five, five oh-six. And last time I was full-time on the planning board, six hundred and thirty-four bucks. So compared to what is here, it seems to be... I know you did the computations very carefully. You had to look at it on the generous side. But considering all the time that you put into it, that does not get recorded hourly, as is the case with the select board work, that does seem reasonable. Again, that, getting back to the select board compensation, maybe a more modest decrease would be satisfactory.
I was thinking, it's kind of a... It's a nice gesture. I wouldn't want the select board stipends to be included in future raise percentages or COLAs or any of that, you know? But I was thinking, like, and I don't know how much more responsibility the chair runs the meetings and that. So like, to go down to forty-two-hundred-and-thirty-eight, it's kind of along the lines of what we did last year, so... It's not... It's not all or nothing, but I mean, you know, we're having it just the whole budget in the town, like, five million?
Yeah.
It's a drop in the bucket, but it is... It's more ceremonious than... I hate even saying that. I don't do this for the money. I do this for us and for my neighbors and for all of us. But the money has come in, like, it's helped me so much. Last, in December, I actually, I needed it really badly. I haven't really paid that much money this winter at all, so... You know, I hate to be the one to say that, like, I'm cutting it. I just, you know, it is... I like to have groceries and stuff. It's awesome.
I mean, I think Vicki and Dave make a good point on both those ends. I mean, thinking of future boards and stuff like that and, you know...
Especially where you have, what, a three-term max? Was it three-term?
Two.
Two-term max.
Yeah.
So you wanna... And it's hard enough to drag in new people because they're... They're like, "Oh, no, I don't know what I'm doing." So gas money, basically.
I got to keep my insurance in December. Yeah, I thought so.
I don't have insurance, so...
We have my business insurance. But anyway, I don't want that... I don't think we wanna stay on this subject all night either.
No.
What number did you have? Vicki's forty-two-hundred and what?
Forty-two and thirty-eight. Instead of making the difference five hundred, it's four hundred from the chair to the other positions. And it's still a decrease.
Ask him, I.
Dave?
I'm... I really can't hear you guys.
Oh, that... So Vicki proposed forty-two-hundred for the chair and thirty-eight-hundred for the other board members.
Okay. Is... Was there a motion? Oh, no, we're on a motion.
No, you can't make a motion, sir. Just...
I'm like, we don't do that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
Jessica's on board, Joe's on board, Vicki proposed it, Amber's on board.
I'm good.
I'll make that change.
I'm not on board.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Amber's not on board. I'll make that change for the next round.
Other thoughts on salaries while we're here?
Step increases. Any thoughts on that?
No.
This sheet has that included, so three-and-a-half percent COLA and the...
Yep, and I put them into separate columns so you could see what the total for each was. So COLA, I put it in at three-point-five.
We also added the position.
And we added... So that's in that new column?
Good.
Adventure?
Yes.
No, it's a not-popular point of view. But as for that new position, Director of Facilities and Recreational Services, I am just not sold on that yet. I think with the acquisition of the MyRec software and delegating the use of that to our Parks and Rec Committee could address the situation about scheduling use of our fields and other facilities. And we do have the Buildings and Ground Committee, although I think online it says that there's no members there. I think we do have a couple folks on it. And I think delegating the responsibility of monitoring the condition of our... Of our facilities and making repairs as necessary, bringing to our attention repairs that are beyond their capabilities and need a contractor, I'd like to see us at least try that for about a year. And if indeed it is beyond the capacity of these two committees to address that, then I'd be more amenable to looking at adding yet another administrative position.
My thoughts on that, and I'll go back to the kind of the reason why I developed this position and recommendation. You guys appoint volunteers, so I really can't hold them accountable. Sometimes I try to engage and help guide them through things, but at a certain point, I don't appoint them. I do appoint employees, so I can hold employees accountable, which makes it easier for me to say, you know, if you're not, you know, meeting an expectation, I can, you know, resolve that in a supervisory way. I've heard from a lot of volunteers that they don't have experience or they're just volunteers, or sometimes they're not sure what they're doing. You know, even to Jeanette's point, like, trying to bring in new people, like, we, you know, sometimes they're like, you're fumbling around your first couple of years. You know, so that's just my take on it. I've run into a lot of issues with your buildings, your grounds, trying to figure out, you know, what's your inventory of things? I mean, for instance, a spring broke on your salt shed door on the day that we had salt delivered, and the next day it was gonna rain. So we couldn't open the building. It was like an emergency. You know, this is me, Jeanette, Tom, trying to figure this out. It's gonna rain tomorrow. How do we get the salt in the building? And all it was, was a rusted-out spring. So it's really just, this position is for your management of and inventory of your facilities. It's, you know, working over recreational services, which that piece, I was hoping to, like, bring in more revenue into it and build off of that. I just find, for me, it's a lot easier to, like, hold employees accountable, train them, set them up, onboard them, set them up for success, and like, put them in a good position.
I see it as reducing the liability overall to the town as well just because of something like that were to happen at one of our fields. And you have an employee that you can actually say, "Hey, I need to do a check this out," or "I need to determine, like, is the field safe to be used today or not?" Or, "We have a rental coming up, but, you know, can you just go take a look?" That kind of thing. I think if you can put revenue, like, a target or a goal, even if it's just a percentage increase over the existing, right? So that there's something in place to help sort of offset that salary, if you will. I just... I see... I see the value in that. Maybe it's partially because I do that for a job and, you know, it's the un... It's the things that people don't notice that happen when you have a position like that, that they don't have to worry about it, and that's why they don't offset, so... But it's just, yeah.
So I think we would be wise, in a sense, I hear you. I reckon, I mean, you made good points. But I feel like we would be, in a way, cutting our nose off to spite our face to not put this in for this year because we have so much unknown right now with how the... Who's gonna be in the park at the booth overseeing it? We don't have a contract currently with Y. And I don't know how that's gonna go. Of course, adding an employee that's gonna have a lot of responsibilities there, 'cause a lot of that job will be there, I think, right?
It'll be everywhere. I mean, I...
But I mean, predominantly, you had it in mind for... For the park? In my...
All the parks. I mean, I received multiple calls, emails all the time regarding Kenny Bon Pon, Chadborne Field came up a few times this year. The salt shed has been an ongoing thing. We've had, you know, a couple different issues with lights and it's... It's hard to say what it would be predominantly. I guess you could say bang-a-nah, because we've focused so much on it.
Seasonally, right?
Yeah.
The demand is seasonal, depending on what's going on, I really think, so I would say so.
Yeah, and I would really love to... We've always talked about a capital plan and trying to figure out, you know, creating these five-year plans on how we're gonna take care of things. Because what ends up happening is, we don't know something's wrong until it's broken. And then it's too late at that point because nobody really has eyes on it. Nobody has had eyes on it for years.
So a couple of years ago, people are asking, "When was the last time the septic was pumped?" Nobody knew. We didn't even know where it was. And thankfully, Ness, you probably knew yet. You weren't here, though. And thankfully, when it called Ness, he knew right where it was. But he couldn't remember the last time we had it pumped out. Those kind of things. How old is this roof? When was the last time it was replaced?
We replaced the roof, this roof, when I was on the board before.
You should get with this person. But it's things like that. You know, the back door by my office, the bottom is all rotted out. You know, those kind of things, for somebody to see it, inventory it, sit down with, yeah, sit down with Lindsay and say, "Look, this is critical. This is not so critical," and to come up with a plan and then to keep a plan rolling of, "Okay, now we got caught up." We did this with our computer systems, too. Now we're caught up. Now it's just gonna keep... Keep the maintenance going. We had a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars to maintain the generator. And when I got here, we weren't doing that anymore. Generator, when the power went out, was like having a hard time coming back up. And sometimes it wouldn't come up, and it blew up our Cisco box. For those that don't know, the Cisco box is everything, computer-wise, phone-wise, et cetera, that comes into this building. It's like the mainframe. So we had to have that overnighted. We had to find funding. We had to do some emergency work. It's those kind of things that make huge difference.
It's your safety inspections, too, right? Because remember last year, and I know it's...
The fire inspections.
I had the fire alarm inspection and it's going. We have emergency lights, all they're supposed to be tested, exit lights, all they're supposed to be tested, like, all those things, fire extinguishers, and all.
Yeah.
I don't dare put that tag over there, but...
He does come once a year.
You know, and that's a lot of work, right? Like, even for volunteers. And so it just makes sense to have, you know, a position and move in that direction because we are growing, you know, as a community.
Thank you.
And, you know, it's someone I can sit with. It can be a department head. It can be, you know, they're an employee. We can hold them accountable. You know, if they're... Maybe they're not meeting the expectations or maybe they don't have the skill sets. I mean, those are things we can work within our rights as employers. And I find, on my end, that's just kind of my world, and I find it a lot easier to work with.
I also wanna recognize that this is our first full year with a town manager. And if this is something that she sees and they see as something that is needed, I mean, we might as say it isn't, in a way, but to look out for our town, our buildings, everything, all the infrastructure, is... It's very important. And I think it's our responsibility to make sure that it... That it happens. And I can see that we have had some areas that have neglected.
Just this week, we've had two issues, you know, one at a park and one at a building that we've had to go and deal with. So just this week, and it's only Thursday. So it's those kind of things that I think would be real beneficial.
I'm sure I do acknowledge all the points you've made about accountability, liability, oversight of the parks and the facilities, a contribution to the capital plan. But I still am uncertain as to whether or not there is sufficient work for a full-time person to the two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. So it's quite apparent I'm in the minority here, and that's a okay. But just my point of view, I think, again, some transition year with, again, volunteers granted, but capable individuals taking on these responsibilities to see how it... How we fare. And indeed, if the ball was dropped repeatedly and then at full-time positions, maybe you wanted it.
You know, I haven't drafted up, like, a job description yet because I'm kind of still in trying to figure this out before I dump a lot of energy into it. But I have come up with, like, you guys have asked, like, what would they do? You know, so I can share that with you, you know, a list of basically responsibilities. And, you know, I built that list off of the things that I've had to deal with in the last year. Because I was really thinking of what's realistic. I'm not just making this up and pulling things out of a hat. It's like, what has happened? FEMA being a big one, where we spent a solid two months back and forth with FEMA. Going out, I had to get geo-coordinates of trees and figure out how much cubic feet of, what was it, chips we chipped, trees we chipped? You know, and just a lot of logistics and that. And so, you know, I pulled things from when I've been keeping track of all the stuff that I've just been doing over the years. And I pulled out the category of buildings and grounds, like, everything that fell into that. And then, you know, it's a lot. There's a lot they can do in a year. You know, and pairing it with recreational services and... And your buildings and grounds, you know, those are seasonal things. Like, you know, in the wintertime, they can start inventorying stuff, right? They can probably, you know, come late fall, winter, they can start looking at stuff, working on that capital improvement plan, filing for grants, you know, whatever it is, planning for the next season. You know, and then maybe in the summertime, it's more recreational services or getting field use, you know, reservations or pines reservations and stuff like that, so... I'm happy to share it.
So are you confident that you would have full-time work for that individual?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's been a full-time job for me to, you know, like Jeanette said, just this week alone, it was two major incidents regarding buildings and grounds, one at a park and one at a building. That probably took up at least two days, right? And that's not including your day-to-day stuff. So there's a lot of day-to-day stuff that can go on, on top of your emergent, you know, this happened, you have to deal with it.
I could also offer that if you guys need extra hands right now, I'm, I'm available.
Yeah, I totally get it.
For handing that, you know, so I can earn my stipend.
And that's great, but you know, and sometimes volunteers aren't always available, you know, we, we have a parks and rec director, but they're, they're part-time, part-time. So I mean, and I don't expect them to just leave their job and come running in to deal with an issue. I think that's, that's unreasonable.
Well, your, your idea, Joe, was to have somebody part-time, but have the parks and rec and the buildings and ground committee taking care of all of these issues?
Have parks and rec take care of the assignment of the fields with that MyRec software program that's been so reasonably highly touted. Have them have responsibility in terms of monitoring the fields in terms of affordability and such. Have the buildings and grounds committee take care of mainly of the facilities, the town hall and any other real properties that the town owns in terms of monitoring such things as getting the septic pumped, coming in and doing the inspections in advance before the fire inspection is conducted. Again, give that shot for a year, but I heard you.
No, and I hear you too, I really do. I mean, I've tried to think of this in a logical way because I, again, I don't want it to be a sticker price shock. I, you know, I don't, I don't want to like dive into this and, and just, you know, I didn't want to go down like a DPW route, right? Like, that's too extreme. But I just, I do feel like with the things that I've, you know, Jeanette and I, Tom Crotto included, like, we've all had to tackle a lot of issues over the years. And I feel like, and Becca too, I feel like there's too much work out there for volunteers to be able to handle. You know, if they're telling me, you know, they are working full-time jobs, you know, they, you know, they're struggling to, you know, coordinate with themselves and they're doing a lot of work, but they're also telling me too that there's only so much they can do because, so I see it as a full-time gig.
If, if I may?
Yes.
If I may, I, I, I mean, I, I've been pretty active, as you're aware. So just from my point of view, I see what Lindsay's saying. I think there's definitely enough loose ends in this town that needs to be tightened up, paid attention to, and, and planned for someone to, to, to do that. You know, no, we don't want to spend crazy money, but, you know, I think eventually, especially if they're worked into, you know, something like bugger nut and, and things of that nature. You know, just like the building inspector and just like the electrical inspector, they eventually start paying for themselves. And I think it's an investment in the future. You know, we are growing. I, I think it would be the right move.
No, I, I mean, I'm not, I, when it was first brought up, I was just like, oh my God, how do we, how do we do that? Like, how do we ask people to pay that much money, you know? I'm, I'm all about cutting wherever I possibly can and, and so, but I, I listen, like, I mean, listen to the volunteers that we already have, that they're like, well, who's going to do this? We have a full-time job and, you know? So I just see like, okay, so we have volunteers doing this. So we have two members on the, you know, and it's just me thinking about it, on the buildings and ground. And something happens at 10 o'clock on a Monday, they're both at work. So who's getting the phone call? It's coming back to the town manager. And since they are volunteers, they're probably not going to have time to get to it. And so I, I just think that we need to stop putting so much of the things that we need to, like, stop letting things go so far, you know, broken-wise, that we have to spend so much to fix them. We need to stop relying on volunteers to tell us when something is broken. We need to have somebody that, that that's their job, that, that we can go to and say, okay, why didn't you tell us that this was, you know, like Lindsay's saying, I can handle it when it's employees, but it, you can't with a volunteer.
So you, you think it's a need, disregard the money for a minute, you, you think it's a need?
Correct.
For the position? I also agree and I also think it's a little bit, a little bit rude or maybe above and beyond asking a volunteer to do the responsibilities of someone that should be an employee to do the work for the town that way. I mean, the town is growing, we're expanding things, we're trying to make things better. I, I like the idea of cutting everything, but looking at this and, and everything around us and listening to, when we went to the school meeting recently and some of the other things we're looking at, it's a little bit unrealistic to, to think that you could even flat-fund this budget. And, and I hate, I hate that I even have to say that, but looking at how everything costs, the state mandates are crazy. And everything is going up. You look at everybody, they're all facing, we're all facing price increases everywhere for everything. And not saying I want to balloon this thing out of proportion, but we, I think we need to keep up as a town and one of the mandates that the voters of the town gave to us by instituting the town manager and she's managing and seeing things and keeping her eyes on things that we haven't been.
I mean, I think, I want to bring up a touchy subject, but I mean, a year ago, we were at the point where the town clerk couldn't be the town manager because it was just too much work. So that was pulled back. But now we're like, yes, here you go, town manager, you can have all of this extra work, you know? So I just think.
Personally, I want the manager, the town manager to manage and, and, and not have to deal with mundane tasks that should be taken care of by other employees.
Yes.
I think we're all in agreement on that. It's not the, what I was proposing, it's not putting more on the town manager, putting more on volunteers who indeed are just that, full-time employees elsewhere. But again, I was just proposing something that we can try on a, again, trial basis for a year. I think everything has been said about this issue that could be said and don't want to us to labor any further. And we are not taking any kind of votes right now. But this will be drawn, drafted into a warrant or not.
Yeah, and I'll work it into the budget.
And we'll vote on that. A future date.
So I think what our task is on this tonight is to decide what we as a select board are going to put forward to the budget committee to review.
Yeah, there's a couple of things as to, so you've got the detail here. Is this the detail that you want to stay with? Do you want to make changes to it before I bring it over and you get one last look at it before we bring it to the budget committee? For instance, COLA, it's at 3.5%, which is exactly what the state minimum wage went up. You know, if you want to have some thoughts on that, if you want to make some changes on that. I did this morning, I did get an email through the HR group and they're asking about the CEO positions in our towns for one of our neighboring towns. So we had talked about that last time, there's two positions open. So just keeping that in mind, retention, recruitment. And I sent you guys some information on the labor standards in the state of Maine and the labor rate's like at 3%. You know, the unemployment rate's like at 3%, which I think gives you like 6,000 people to choose from in the state. So that, it's, it's hard. It's hard and I get sticker shock, we're all going through it personally, you know, everything. So I completely understand. So this is kind of, do you want to make any other changes here before I bring it over to the actual budget?
I'm just going to say it and this has not, I'll preface it where it has nothing to do with performance. If I was going to change this in any way, it would be to cut COLA down. But I will just put it out there that I had that thought. And to your point of what you're saying already, that's where the state landed, that's where union contracts in my place have been funded and landed. And I think that that's where we should stay. I would not, as a taxpayer, I'm thinking of the taxpayer, I was like, oh, we should really not get three and a half in a step.
I get it.
We can afford not to. And again, that has nothing to do with anyone's performance, it's just my own budget brain, similar to Amber, it's like, I just, I want, I want to cut where we can cut and I just don't think this is a place that we can afford as a town to cut. I think we've gotten it to a good place, we have solid data to stand behind it with the salary study that we did a year and a half-ish ago. So I just want to put that out there, that that was a consideration in my brain and it's not because I just, we've, we've gotten things to a good place and to Jeanette's point, there's two towns on either side of us that are looking for people and again and again, I see those ads pop up, so. So I, I personally am okay with the exception of the modification that we had made to the stipend or so I'm for, putting this as is to the budget committee.
And I'm going to add an incentive for the town manager when she does reviews.
Where would that, where would that go?
That, I'll work that into the budget. When I move this over to the actual budget, I'll work that in there, you'll see a line in that. So you'll revisit this one more time after I move it over into this big one. And then you'll, you'll have it.
I don't know that we heard from Dave about anything that he has in mind to change or?
Um, no, I'm, I'm right along with you.
Sergeant Jeanette, do you have a figure in mind for the incentives?
I haven't really chatted with Lindsay about it and I'd, I'd prefer if I could chat with her about it. I don't think anything is extravagant to say, hey, you're doing a great job, we really appreciate, you know, everything that you've put through, just to, to keep people up and, and like, oh wow, I feel appreciated. And by the way, your cards, your handwritten cards, people really liked that. So bad day, you pull it out and you're like, I am appreciated.
Oh, yes, there, and you know, I, I like that too. I like doing that.
Yeah. Went really well, yep. Okay, moving on.
Since we can't go back to 1950 prices.
Oh, wouldn't that be nice?
Yes, it would.
All right, if we go to page five.
On the new.
Yeah, on your new, your big document. David, you with me?
I am.
The one I sent you today.
Sergeant Jeanette, is there much changes from the previous handout that we received? This would be a page five from this.
Well, there were some changes that you asked me to make and some things you questioned that we had gone, I had gone over, redone, those kind of things.
Yeah, so if she gives you like a new one, Joe, it's whatever we, you guys have added or updated.
Okay.
Yeah.
They're updated.
Okay.
Oh, your folder will get way fatter before.
What page did you say again?
Page five. It's general admin. So we have, still have the Trio Town Cloud. I've been working with that, I have to get back to the account structure for that to start working, making it happen.
Did you do the demo?
We did the demo.
How'd it go?
It, it went really well, considering the fact that I was so sick. But, but it went really well and I got our account structure off to her. She had some questions and came back. So we're still, once we get the account structure built, we can move forward with that. So that's the first part that we have to work with.
I definitely liked the layout of the program compared to Trio, it looked, looked really amazing, so we'll probably do more demos and we're still building into it and stuff, but yeah, so far it went really well.
That was just scary because I knew you were going to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And it, we also have the ability to build in project codes on it. So if we're working on a certain project, instead of having it in different lines, we could do the project code, call it up under the project code.
Nice.
So that'll be really nice.
Jeanette, if you don't mind, just for the record, how much did the taxpayers save by shifting over to that?
So I had estimated $25,000. So you're going to save about $10,000. And that's for the next three years. You're going to save, I think it was 10, 12. If, I did, I did you guys a graph?
Yeah.
It was like 10, 12. It almost paid for itself by year three.
Yep. I just wanted to put that on record, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
So that 25,731 that's highlighted on here, that's for what we currently have budgeted?
That's, that's what I figured for Trio for next year. And then Town Cloud came along.
Yeah, they increase about 8% every year.
So we figured that, then Town Cloud came along, so we won't have that.
We won't, but we haven't said, okay, this is it, this is what the town needs. We need to deal, we need to look at it some more, building our account structure in there. That way we can start looking at the other aspects of, of the program.
How long will it be? Do you estimate it will be, that we'll be done building in and Trio will be able to be removed?
Yeah, I'm hoping not long. This is January, so is 1099s, W2s, Form 3s, W3s, workers' comp, that's what I've been focusing on right now, year end, quarter end, all of that. So I'm at the tail end of the workers' comp audit, so I'm going to be moving right back into that after that.
I think when we were talking with Abby, you know, and some of it's unknown, but I think the general idea is we would shoot for a goal like June, you know, to have it completely onboarded, staff retrained so that beginning the next fiscal year, we're ready to roll out Town Cloud. Of course, there's always variables that can come up, so like Jeanette had said, there might be a little bit of an overlap, but we're working towards the goal of like, you know, June, I think we're facing.
So I think the question is, correct me both of you if I'm wrong, is how long before we make that determination, we're going here? So I haven't built the account structure yet, so we haven't seen the assessing module and we saw a little bit of the front end, but we didn't get into great detail with it.
My curiosity was like, how long or how much would we, do you think that it would cost us for some overlap in the trend?
Well, the, I don't know because the, when we had, when we had the, the demo, right? We can upload our stuff ourselves and put it in there. If I can upload this year's data and put it in there and do the audit out of Town Cloud, we won't need any overlap. Because I would take what we have at this point in time, upload it, start working a 24, 25 year right out of Town Cloud for my final, for my final stuff. Does that make sense?
It does.
I do, I do a period 13, maybe a period 14, and I can do all of those final numbers if I get that stuff uploaded, like say on June 30th.
I guess, I was just wondering if there would have to be like a prorated part of the 25,000 for Trio.
It's yet to be determined, Vicky, but what I saw at the demo, I, if we can upload our own stuff and it's that easy. if we can upload our own stuff and it's that easy and it looks like it's pretty easy. I've done million integrations and it looks fairly easy. If I can take the data, June thirtieth, upload it into Town Cloud and then work off the finishing up twenty-four, twenty-five in period fourteen or period thirteen, then we wouldn't need any overlap.
So therefore it's not.
We could turn it off.
But at least there's the possibility of the twenty-five grand that we're setting aside for Trio, not that it's used at all.
Correct. Yep. Or even a possibility of, okay, well, we're gonna have to have our audit work done. So that happens in October, so maybe we buy four months worth of Trio. There's a possibility that I won't even need to do that from looking at the demo and the ability to upload.
It's just too soon to tell.
Yeah, it, it is because I'm just getting myself back up and running. And like I said, it's year end, quarter end, everything end right now.
I appreciate that.
But that, that twenty-five thousand number is for a full year of Trio.
Full year of Trio. So that's, that's still in question. And we're not at the point yet, I wanna see the data, the assessing database. I want Laura to see the assessing database. We did touch on the front end a little bit, Sue was here looking at that. But I, we'd like to look at it in a little more detail.
But this will definitely be the last time you see the Trio estimation on this budget.
Hopefully, as long as all of the other modules are working to the extent that people need them to work to.
Awesome.
So the other new thing here that I added at the very bottom of that section, myrec.com. Sorry.
I also gave you guys a handout. I sent it in an email. We, myrec will prorate it. So we do have some monies within that budget line that we anticipated costs would be higher. They came in a little lower. So there is some monies available if we wanted to get it going this year and then prepare for the next budget. I haven't started that yet, only because I just wanna make sure we're all on the same page. I didn't wanna jump into the program and on the off chance you guys decided you didn't want to move forward with it or put it in the budget. So I just wanted to make sure we were all kinda on the same page with that before I implemented.
I'm a thousand percent on board. I've looked around some other towns. I looked at some other, some towns. There's, there's a lot of opportunities.
It's actually how I found it poking around towns.
Well, just different rate structures and different fees. You can make it. It's pretty great.
You want to talk about three sixty-five? Yeah, so I am, it won't really be a huge, like, you know, be a drop in the bucket savings. But I am looking to do like an inventory of a lot of our devices. Because I think we do have some laptops, maybe some cell phones and stuff, you know, floating around out there. Because we pay a monthly service for remote managed services and emails and stuff. So that was one thing I was just gonna go over was, I haven't got all the detail from Brendan yet, but I wanted to clean up that inventory for the next budget. So we might save a couple thousand dollars there.
Which one, which line is that?
We haven't written it into the line yet, Vicky, because she's still looking into it.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Anytime. So she's still, she's trying to coordinate with Brendan to see what's not being utilized. And, you know, if, if we added an email for like, I don't know, some committees or something, and if it's just not being used, there's a Microsoft savings right there, like seven dollars a month, fourteen dollars a month.
I think a couple years back, and this is mostly to do with like committees and stuff. So we had talked a lot about, and like Jessica might remember, maybe Dave remembers, about, you know, people wanted email accounts. And so we did look into it to see if we could get volunteers, maybe an email, because people were concerned about, I don't know, if it was FOA or maybe they just wanted availability to be able to like draft letters or minutes or whatever. And so there is a cost with it unfortunately. And then around that same time, we had to implement the cybersecurity acceptable use policy because we were at risk of losing our cyber liability insurance. They wanted us to implement that. You know, so this kinda, I started looking into doing emails for volunteers. It came out to be too costly. And then the cyber liability was an issue too, because now you have to implement devices and all this. So I had done a trial period. We did put money in this year's budget because we were looking into maybe doing like a group, you know, planning board or, or comp plan or something. So I have implemented that. I'm just finding it's not getting utilized. So I've been, that's why I'm doing the inventory is just to kind of, you know, we tried something to try to see if we can resolve an issue. But I wanna get a good inventory of where we're at with it. And maybe if it's not being utilized, we just, you know, don't institute that program, you know, for the shared laptops or the shared emails for groups and stuff. And we can clean that up a little bit.
So I haven't made any, well, let's go to page eight. There's nothing that has changed or we wanna talk about since your last.
On page eight?
Yeah, on the other pages, since your last meeting, unless you guys were looking over it and you wanted to discuss something.
I do.
Yeah, bring it up, Amber. Let's go, that's what we're waiting for.
It's back on page three. And tell me if we're doing benefits later on, because I can just keep my.
Benefits will, will go with the salaries.
Okay.
So what, what are you on page three? What did you want to talk about?
Yeah, so the, the training.
Yep.
So on page four. Yeah, it starts on, and I do have something on page three, but the first one was on page four. There's CPR training for recreation at one eighty.
Yep, they, they've asked to.
In the town hall training. And then down under twenty.
Oh, I see.
Two ninety, benefits, Parks and Rec, Holly Hart, first aid class, another one eighty. Is that the same one eighty or are those two separate one eighties?
Okay, where's the second one eighty?
Down at the two, twenty dash two ninety benefits slash membership dues.
Yep.
The last one, Parks and Rec, Holly Hart, first aid classes. And then, but up above, there's CPR training for recreation.
Okay, that's a duplicate. I'll take that out.
Okay. Will you take it, which one are you, you take it out of the?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it out of the membership and dues.
Okay.
So when Holly and I were talking, we were figuring that. That was one thing that they wanted to do in case they had an incident. So she was trying to get me some numbers, so I put in two different places, my apologies.
That's fine. So back on page three, benefits training. So statistically, we never use near the money that we've, that we put into this. Like.
Okay, so can I just back up a little bit?
Yep.
So in twenty-three, twenty-four, we put in five thousand because we didn't know what the town manager would want to do, what memberships they wanted to be in, because we didn't have that person yet.
Yep.
And then in twenty-four, twenty-five, she's, she's got a lot more memberships that she's hooked up with now. And before that, it was only four thousand dollars.
Am I looking at the wrong thing? Because it looks like in what we budgeted for twenty-four, which fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, was nine thousand fifteen.
Correct. We added five thousand for the town manager.
So we only used forty-six, twelve.
Because she wasn't fully onboard at that point.
Okay.
So she's got a lot more memberships because she's hooking up with a lot of the other management programs now.
I, I just, and I, I know.
Yeah, we can, I'll sit with Lindsay and we can talk about it. But I know that's why we increased from four thousand to five thousand.
I just would like to make my own personal thing on this. If we're gonna allot that money for training, I think then we need to make that training mandatory. If we're gonna budget that money, then I think we need to make that the requirement. Because it's a lot of money every year that just gets rolled back in and I think we could leave that in.
Which training are you talking about? All of them or?
Well, it's just the whole, yeah, it's just the whole amount. Like, where was I? Like, okay, so MMA training, Board of Selectment, twenty-five classes, five each.
Well, that was a big thing like two or three years ago.
Exactly.
Isn't that, isn't it, when you get elected, isn't that in the charter that you have to go?
You have to do, like we did the basic. Yeah, the basic one. But I, but not five different classes.
I see what Amber's saying. I, and I don't wanna speak for you, but like when you look at the historic budget to act, it's about fifty, it's like fifty percent.
About fifty percent, yeah.
And so I don't know where that gives, where it gives within each line, I don't know. Because it's not clear which ones have.
We'll take, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, I know when we sit down with different departments and we talk about trainings, it's hard to know what's out there for the next year. It's not like we can go and look at the schedule. I always keep my eyes out. I notice MMA does about three months in advance and that's it. So I don't know what trainings they're gonna have. And I do know usually Jeanette and I kinda have to like, you know, ballpark it, you know? Okay, how many trainings do you think you'll need? Or what types of, you know, what types of, you know, areas might you want to explore? So for us on this end, we ballpark it a lot. And, yeah. It's.
We just, we don't know what's gonna come up. I mean, I'm taking a.
Yeah, that's, that's true.
Yeah, well, we'll sit down.
So we're only required to take, when we get elected for each term, to take the one. That's the one that, the requirement right now.
Yes.
We're not required to go through five different classes, so.
And I'm all about budgeting it if people are going to be like, oh, no, I wanna take like the, the one that you always sell.
Verbal judo.
You should be a marketing person for that jujitsu class. Verbal jujitsu, you're not physical jujitsu.
I could do that.
So usually it depends on the hot topics too.
Absolutely, and I get that. I just, I, I hear what Amber's saying too. I think we could just tighten it up a little bit.
We'll take a look.
Good call, Amber.
Lindsay and I will sit down and take a look at it.
And then this one is just for my own. I'm not sure if I'm, again, on page five. But the seventeen buildings and codes, there's the ZBA, one class at fifty-five dollars.
Yep, because that was a big.
Is this the same as the one that is back in?
Committees.
In the town hall benefits training, there is a, other committees? No, there's the ZBA.
MMA training, so ZBA, four classes for two hundred and forty dollars. So thirty from the bottom.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna remove that.
Yeah, because it's not, it's actually spelled out. It's not the initial ZBA.
Well, I was looking for ZBA, yeah. Okay, so that one, that, the two forty can be removed out of that one.
Yep, I'm gonna take that one out.
Okay. And then under twenty, two ninety, MBOIA, one at forty-five. Is that different than the one in twenty dash two ninety? The second one down, MBOIA, main building office and inspectors, two at forty.
So twenty-two eighty is training. Okay? And then twenty-two ninety are the memberships. So you usually get half, half off of the training for being a member.
Okay, so. So, yeah, so if I'm looking at two, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm looking at twenty dash two ninety, benefits dash members and dues on page four.
Yep.
I'm looking at twenty dash two ninety, benefits, memberships and dues on page five. Are, are those two different things?
On page four.
Oh, you have twenty.
We have two at forty dollars for Gagne and Thompson.
Oh, that's a duplicate. Oh, I gotcha. Okay, so one will stay in twenty-two ninety under eleven.
Okay, so that one will stay.
Yep.
On page four and page.
On page four, so one will stay there.
Okay, so it'll be forty there.
Yep, and move, and one will move, one will stay in the other one.
Okay.
It's on page five.
So forty-five on page.
Because one is for buildings and codes and we're trying, people keep asking, are we charging enough? So we're trying to get a handle on the expenses of the Buildings and Codes Department to see what exactly the money coming in versus the money that we're spending on it. So I broke those out, so I missed that.
Okay, so would it be, would the forty-five be forty if they were gonna be two at forty up here?
Yeah, we'll change that to, we never know what it's gonna be. So we guess. So I'll change it back to forty.
Okay, not that, okay. I'll take five dollars, that's all I can get.
I'm giving you, honey.
I told you how good she was at this. That I noticed on the budget committee years ago, I watched Amber at work and like, she sniffs stuff out like nobody else.
Okay, and I think that's it for me for right now. I'm sorry.
Back to page eight.
You're doing good.
No, appreciate the input.
I love the eagle eyes, I, I really do.
Because there's so much to it. And I try to be detailed. So people go, well, here's twenty thousand, what, what are you spending twenty thousand on? So I try to be as detailed as possible. So it's like, well, this is what it is. Okay, so page eight, town report.
Do you guys wanna do any changes with that? I think over the years, we, we've, we've found that, you know, we used to order like six hundred copies and then we'd end up with boxes of reports that we couldn't get rid of. So we've been titrating that number down. I think this last year we ordered two fifty. We did get rid of all of them, yay. And some people did ask after we got rid of them, so that was cool. You know, I don't know if you wanna leave it the same or make any changes. It is your, technically your municipal report. So I did try to jazz it up this last time because I was hoping just to like.
Yeah.
Just to like get it out there, you know, and I don't, you know, so I don't know. I tried to put informational things in there to be helpful and so maybe that's the route I'm gonna try to take again is to put some more razzle-dazzle to it.
I like the photos. I think they were doing Grant, like a bunch of Grant's photos, some other people, so that was really nice. When you say get rid of, you meant like people took them?
Yeah, so we handed out, this year we handed out all of them.
Except for one, we have to keep one.
Well, yeah, we keep one. We keep some for ourselves and then we hand them out.
How many did we get? Two, the two.
Two fifty.
Two fifty. The year before it was three fifty and I think I had fifty left over and I, I couldn't pay anybody to take them. But it wasn't as fancy the last year before that. So, yeah, I don't know if you wanna leave it the same, go up, go less.
Or, and we've talked about what goes in it too, you know?
If you're saying you had a hard time getting rid of three fifty.
And it wasn't the sparkly one though.
Right. But after two fifty, you were like, oh, we don't have anymore. Maybe three hundred is the magic number this year.
Three hundred or two seventy-five.
Is it, it's online, right?
It's online, yeah.
So if somebody came into the town hall after all two hundred and fifty of them and they were like, I need a copy of this.
Yeah.
Could we print one for them?
You're actually, you're not legally required to have them printed at all. I think the only reason why, and I know I speak from my town as well, because we run into the same issue. There's only like a few people who get them. We just have a few diehards out there that love getting that hard copy. We have a few people that, they're like, where's the town report? They want it in their.
I'm one of those.
It's a collection, it's a collection.
Put it there.
Right, and so I mean, I, I kind of, I just feel for those people. I think it's kinda sweet that they you know, they're like, oh, where's that Town Report? Yeah, so I mean, I'm fine either way. I just wanted to put it out there. I did do a lot of changes this last round and I was playing around with, you know, I'm community engagement and just trying to put some stuff out there.
I mean, I think keeping it at two fifty and if somebody is adamant that they need a copy, like we could just put out there like, well, come into the Town Hall, we'll print you a copy. Be bound like the, you know, when you get at the meeting, but it would still be a copy and
Yeah.
then you wouldn't have fifty extra copies.
Yeah, at least we don't have a hundred sitting around, either boxes of them.
Or boxes. When you started, I'm like, oh, these are damn reports.
So we're leaving it as is?
Yeah, it sounds okay.
Okay. Um, if we go down to page nine, Employee Recognition, the first line.
Um, I'll just put a note, do you wanna change or leave as is? Again, it was kind of our first run, so we, we did the, we did the gift cards, you know, and handwritten notes and stuff like that. Everybody really appreciated it and the freebie day off, so if you guys had, if you kinda wanna keep with that, or we could always come up with different ideas too and brainstorm things, but.
I like what we did only because I think one of the things, we went round and round and round about this.
Yep.
And I think we all were like, it'd be great to have a big event, but then
But
there's people that are like, no, it wouldn't actually.
If the employees aren't into it, if they're not into it, then I don't
What we did and we do a version of that, maybe something exact same thing, but if that dollar amount gets us to where we need to be with making employees feel acknowledged and, and recognized, um, I'm up for that. I don't wanna reinvent the wheel and jerk them. Maybe you all wanna have those conversations again, knocking yourselves out, but.
No, thanks. You know, it, it started off to be the one thing and then what it evolved into was the perfect thing because everybody liked it.
Yeah.
So if, if they liked it, we should just do that until they don't like it and then we'll get creative, do something else.
Yeah.
How much did you spend on the gift cards last year?
I think we
It was like fifty dollars per employee. I would say it was about like eight or nine hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think that, I wanted to say eight eighty-eight.
Bought a card for those cards.
So you wanna leave it at that?
If I had some work, I think we leave it.
Okay. Okay, so Elections, you've chosen that, you reviewed that last time on page ten, and you've chosen to send that to the Budget Committee unless you took a look at it and you wanted to make some changes. General Admin Insurance, I got the workers' comp this morning, so I'll be reviewing that and bringing that piece back to you. Contingency? Cringe.
Did you say contingency?
Yes, cringe.
I thought we talked about that last time.
I say, I say fund it with ten thousand dollars. Let it, let it overlap every year. Bring it to a balance of fifteen thousand dollars and anything that's left at the end of the year, you throw it into the capital improvement fund.
Okay, time to get rid of the beer.
That's my thought.
Um, not to sound disrespectful, that's your actual thought, not a joke?
No, no, I, I would, I wanna fund the contingency.
Oh, I hear you, I hear you, I just, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that, cuz you kinda like
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
So I just wanted to make sure that that was like what you were really putting
Hard to tell, your facial expression.
I would, I, I'd fund it, you know, I mean, we, it seems that we always need it more than not. I think if it goes over a certain amount and, you know, maybe it's not fifteen thousand, but if it goes over a certain amount and, and, you know, put that money into the capital improvement plan, so, so you're sort of funding two things each year.
I don't, oh, you can't, Jeanette, can you actually do that?
So we would have to do a war article that says anything that's left over in your contingency is to be put into your capital improvement plan.
If that's the case, then you might as well just fund contingency at zero and put an extra twenty-five hundred in the capital improvement plan.
So I know it's a hot topic, the contingency topic, but just, and I don't care one way or the other. But in my experience in this last storm from last April, the FEMA thing, I would look at this budget like if something came in, like a tornado ripped through the Town Hall or a major storm knocked down, you know, a hundred thousand dollars worth of tree damage, you know, we have to find that money someplace, you know, so we can fix that stuff and then it's, and then we're working to get, towards getting it, so we haven't even gotten it back yet. So I'd look at it like if something drastic happened, what are you okay with sacrificing in your current budget that you would give up? For this FEMA one, we did roads because we just figured that's the only place we could take it from. But had there been a COVID or a bridge or, you know, a road that you needed to really fix that you were like, this has to be fixed, well, that just gets put down the road. And maybe that's okay, or maybe down the road, that's now more expensive because, you know, you had to take from this, you had to rub Peter to pay Paul, right? So that's one way of going about it, that's the way we've been going about it, and maybe that's what works, and that's what we'll do. And like I said, I'm not saying one way or the other, you know, contingency or no contingency, but it's something that happened recently and it kinda got me thinking about it myself.
But if a tornado blows through here and they think
We have insurance.
you know, twenty-five hundred dollars is not gonna be
Yeah.
enough, you know, that's not
Well, so we talked earlier about the salt shed door. So currently what I did was I took that out of the salt money, but if it comes tight with the salt money, I'm gonna be coming to you and asking you to take it out of your contingency budget.
Another thing
Because we don't know what next six months are gonna, you know.
Yeah, we've had other things come up more recently that it depends on where we land there, may need to come out of contingency, but I don't know until we figure out the solving.
The amount's not all that large, but I kinda first look at it as sort of a petty cash account that you could definitely do when necessary. I'm sorry, we haven't gotten, gotten reimbursement from FEMA yet?
No. So because it was a state declaration, FEMA's all done with us and it's now on the side of the state. So FEMA will send it to the state, the state will send it to us. In my experience with that, with the Mother's Day floods, if I wanna date myself, it was a good three years. I'm not saying it's gonna be that this time, but that was what happened last time. Yeah. So do you wanna leave it at twenty-five? Do you wanna make it fifteen? Dave, I punted for you.
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I'd raise it to ten thousand.
So I do think we'll probably end up using the whole twenty-five this year, if not, like we'll end up going over it because we've had some incidents.
I'd be in favor at the minimum of keeping it at twenty-five. And I'll just say based on my own experience, I don't know that we would get anything above and beyond that approval by the voter. Which is the reality of it.
Would you also favor keeping it twenty-five?
As would I.
I could probably not even have to say anything and everybody will know what I'm saying.
Please say.
Yeah.
Yeah, because because we're consistent.
So do you want us to write a war article that says if there's money left over in contingency, to move it over to capital improvement? Just roll it back into the fund balance?
Twenty-five hundred dollars, if we use most of it, what are we gonna do capital improvement wise?
Okay.
I could see that if we did go with Dave's grand idea of ten thousand dollars. But
Okay.
I mean, if we're gonna do that, then it, this, it, it, I don't know, the contingency is all about what ifs. I mean, you could, you could throw who knows what's gonna happen?
We don't, that's the thing.
That's the
That's, that's, you're making the point for me.
If a big thing happens and we need money for it, the voters are all in town, they can, they can come and help us decide what we need to do and vote on it then.
You can also use your reserve account.
And reserve accounts and whatnot, so I just, I just don't see it as necessary.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll leave that in my brain with the Director of Facilities, hopefully it'll help come up with a better plan so that people see
I like that.
We actually should be using that reserve.
Okay. I like that, I do it.
Sorry. Okay.
So pretty much people are on board, we're staying with twenty-five hundred.
I know, I'm eloped, but that's fine with me.
That's okay.
It's fine, I'm still sticking
I just wanna make sure before I move on. All right, so Animal Welfare, you've chosen to send that to the Budget Committee unless you reviewed it you have some things you wanna say.
Yes.
In the backup material that you provided us before, we have a copy of the agreement with Animal Welfare Society. Now, my apologies if I'm missing it, but I'm looking at the signatures and I don't see a date of signature on these, so obviously
Cuz I made the coffee before it got signed for you guys.
Okay.
But yeah, I'm sure.
Well, I see the signatures here, but I don't see dates. But my greater concern is this, I may have missed it, but I don't see any language in here that provides for the contingency, unlikely as it may be, that the town would not authorize the amount, which is reasonable to take care of the animal welfare services. So all I'm bringing up is
I got you.
if you please look through the contract and if that language isn't in there, it seems to me that it should be. Otherwise, you're authorizing expenditure or committing the town to an expense without the town's official approval of that expense.
Most of the other contracts do have, I didn't even notice those.
Then again, maybe in there
That's a really good point, Joe. No, I'd say it's a great point. Gotcha.
So we're not done with Animal Welfare then?
No, we are, Joe's just, so here's the co- contracts, I think. He's just recommending that the next time we do contract, that there be a non-funding clause. Right?
In the unlikely event, right.
Yeah, okay.
Otherwise, otherwise again, committed to an expense that has not been previously authorized.
We, we would actually have to go back to the voters on that one. They take a lot of the, the animals. Yeah, no, good point. Okay, Health and Human Services. So last time we were here
It's twelve, right?
Twelve.
Yes.
Why are you being so aggressive, like, grab up, Dave, sorry.
Oh. So last time we were here, you looked at GA and you were kind of okay with that unless you have some other ideas. And what you wanted to do was review the pamphlets that came through for the additional services, the social services piece, like Lifelight, Day One, all of that, and another one came in, Main Public Radio, which I put in your packet tonight. So what were your thoughts after you had a chance to review that?
So for carrying unlimited debate, specify an amount of thirteen fifty-eight.
Yes.
I was missing a page from their request that specified an amount.
I'm sorry?
No, that's, I just I got the
Tell me what Sweetster is again?
What's that?
Can you tell me what Sweetster is again?
Sweetster is like a, it's a, it's a lot of things, kind of.
Yeah, it's, they do a lot of
Yeah. Organizations.
Mental health
Yep.
kids and stuff like that.
Families and services.
Thank you.
So it wasn't on the back page of your Carrying Unlimited? It's on the back page. I didn't do two page, whoops. On
Okay, yeah.
Do you want me to make you a copy of that?
Not necessarily, just that, but they did specify that amount.
Yeah, and they specified it, they break it down
Okay, okay.
On
Into different services.
They're a good outfit.
Pass it down.
Sure thing.
So this may or may not make this category easier. I think historically in my time on the board, we funded Lifelight because it's an emergency service.
Yeah.
And in my own personal opinion, I speak for myself, the others end up being subjective and I just think it's just a clear, straight path to go Lifelight. It's a service that anyone would potentially need in our town. I think, please don't misinterpret that, that there's a lot of those services on, on the list that I would be like, yes, oh my gosh, absolutely. Um, I just think it just gets into too much of the subjective, kind of like, well, why not this one? Cause my family would use this, but my family doesn't use that, or it just
I, I, I agree with that assessment and, and I like the idea of funding the Lifelight for the same reason that you just said. And the other ones, like most people that wanna donate money, our neighbors, our taxpayer, public, they know what to do with their money and where they wanna spend and, and donate to. And so I would let them do that on their own like we do. But the Lifelight is for that reason, because it's an emergency service.
I, I agree with the Lifelight. I like that Lifelight says how many residents from Lyman that they've transported, you know, in that number of years. So I think that the money that we put forth has a value there. But I was reading Sweetser's report and I did kind of like that, now I can't find it. That they did mention how many people they have helped.
Forty-five.
Oh, there it is. So yeah, that they, you know, how many residents they've helped, how, they actually give a breakdown of how many, like dollar-wise, what their services were. And this one I think is geared more, Sweetser is geared more towards the youth in the town and a lot of mental health and just other social things. I, I might, could be convinced to give fifteen hundred dollars to Sweetser as well.
Your manager, if you take a look at your background on the second page there with Carrying Unlimited, if you're gonna break it down in terms of services provided to Lyman residents. So I'm absolutely in favor of funding Lifelight. I'd be inclined to providing a donation to Sweetser as well because of the forty-five residents in the town who have served before and also Carrying Unlimited because it does provide a social service that has been used by folks in this town who are experiencing domestic violence issues. As for the others, Day One, no. Center for Wildlife, two thousand dollars. I like wildlife, but not that much. The Main Tree Farm and Main Public, I quite agree with you, Vic, because that's the kind of thing that people wanna chip in and donate to on an individual basis right ahead, but not as a
I think all of them, other than Lifelight, would be, could be donated to individually by anyone. But I don't, I don't, and so I don't think we need a layer of
I agree, I agree with Vic.
I'm sticking with Lifelight only.
I like the sound of that, Dave.
I know. Put it on a loop.
So we're taking Lifelight. And that's gonna be my change.
That's.
I mean, if, if there's, I'm gonna say yes to Lifelight, yes.
Well, I hear, I hear three for Lifelight and nothing else. And two, people with other opinions. So what's the consensus that I'm gonna make the change and come back to you with?
Sounds like a consensus of lifelight.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Without actually voting, yes.
No, you're not, you're not voting, but I, I need to, I need something to, to come back to. Okay, so roads, you've chosen to send that to the budget committee unless you have some changes, afterthoughts?
No.
Buildings and grounds.
So. Page seventeen.
Sorry, page fourteen.
Fourteen?
No.
Thirteen?
Starts on fourteen.
Just a quick comment on thirteen. The amount for coverings and ditching is not a significant, but that's quite understandable. I think we're jumping from twenty-seven to thirty-seven thousand budgeted for that. Just.
Yep. So that, that prevents the water from flowing over your roads and messing them up.
So it's worthwhile investment.
It's maintenance.
Mm-hmm. Okay. There's no difference.
Page fourteen? Yeah. Okay.
Did you wanna talk about fumar again? Or issues that mean?
So Lindsay and I sat yesterday. This is one section where we said, okay, if there's a major issue that happens, what in here are you willing to sacrifice? You know, those, those are, that's something we just wanted to bring to you because something has to be sacrificed. Like roads got sacrificed last year, but it didn't really get sacrificed because it was too wet to do any roads. So they cleaned up versus doing, doing a lot of the roads that they were gonna do.
Well, I think that's part of it, right, is it's dependent on the time of year, it's dependent on the season, it's dependent on where we currently stand with the budget, whatever, whatever unknown happens.
Exactly. So.
Fourteen right now.
If you go to page fifteen. Oh, look at fourteen.
Yeah.
Then we'll move on, sorry.
On fourteen.
Yeah.
Do we really need to strike the parking lot? That's forty-four-ten.
Yep, here in the, at Town Hall. I went back and forth with that one. Do you want it? We just did it.
Clear.
Do you wanna take it off for a year?
Yes.
And it's eight hundred fifty bucks.
Okay.
It went how many years without it?
Three, that I know of.
So I think even if we did let every other.
Every other year?
Yeah.
Got any more of that page, Joe?
Oh, six.
Or anyone else?
We did make the adjustment to the maintenance that was originally planned for the gates. Maintenance agreement itself should cover that, so I see that amount has decreased. That's thirty-one-three-ten.
And you, you jumped ahead of me. I'm on fourteen. I'm letting you, I'm giving you guys a chance to do more fourteen. You guys good with fourteen? Dave?
Yes.
Okay. So then if we go over to page fifteen on going down, so under Bunginut, before we get to Kennybug Pond, on tree maintenance, when we first started the tree maintenance for Bunginut, we put it in capital improvement, but it seems like it's an ongoing thing. So I've moved it up here from capital improvement, just to keep it as an ongoing thing, just to point that out. But it's level funded with, within your entire budget. Kennybug Pond, did you wanna talk about gate?
So did you include the information, I sent you the information about, I called the CTR Gate Company.
Yep.
So they had reported to me, to answer the question on the heavy load, because there was like heavy load equipment going over there. They said it's just a wire, basically, under the pavement and that so long as the pavement was intact, they felt like the, the magnetic wire or whatever it is would be okay. If the pavement had cracked or crumbled, that's where heavy equipment might impact that thing. So we probably wanna keep an eye on that apron, so that we'll know if we have to do anything.
And that's on the list, though.
Yes. Do we get a volunteer on them?
Yeah. So as far as the maintenance, so he explained to me over the phone, there is no routine maintenance. And I know we've got conflicting information, so I don't know. But that's what he told me over the phone more recently, and then he sent me the replacement costs, like if something broke, the gate arm, you know, spring, whatever, chain or belt. So I did send that over and I don't know if you included that in their new recent packet or not.
I don't think I did.
Okay. I'm sorry.
I don't remember the off the top of my head. It wasn't that much. It was pretty.
I saw it. It was all reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's very small. I agree with you, Dave.
But yeah, as far as that, I don't know.
Too late or what? What's happened?
One of the other things. You wanna sit down here, Vicki? Closer to Dave. Sorry. Since we're on the topic of Kennybug Pond, you know, one of the other incidents we've had, so we've had, you know, a lot of vandalism over there still. We've had somebody break the gate arm, which was under warranty. So I, I think it's a good idea to have those replacement costs in there in case something comes along. And then more recently, we've had somebody tear down the cameras. So that's gonna be about twenty-five hundred or so to replace.
What? When did that happen? Monday?
Two days ago.
Monday?
No, it was like Tuesday or Wednesday.
That was the other incident I was talking about that happened this week.
So we, we talked about, was the person on camera, like clear enough to report to the police?
Oh, yeah. So we make police reports. It's a matter of, you know, if you find and catch the person and then, you know, we can, what the police will do is, you know, you pay restitution. So for instance, the gate arm, they actually did catch the guy who did the gate arm. But, and they, we're gonna have him do a plea deal, you know, we'll drop the charges, you pay the restitution. But he ended up apparently having warrants in Massachusetts, so he's in jail in Massachusetts. And until then, we can't get the restitution. So those are, I mean, I will definitely prosecute anybody who messes with the stuff over there. But then it's a matter of, we're not guaranteed to get money from the restitution. So we are looking at, which is what I was talking about, the contingency is like you have the salt shed door, we're not sure of. And depending how that goes, I have about twenty-five hundred dollars tied up to replace the cameras.
They have to be replaced?
They can be jerry-rigged. I don't know how much damage has been done. They broke an attachment, they broke some, it's like a piece to the camera you can't just order and, and buy and replace it. And it's what connects them to the mount.
So I didn't wanna.
Yeah, it's frustrating, but it happens.
Been vandalism at there. I remember it in the, in the seventies.
It's funny, the person who did it on camera, right, she's saying, I used to come here and do donuts and cookies in the parking lot all the time. And that's her frustration and why she took down the cameras, so.
It was a her?
It was a her.
I'm sure you looked into it, but does the town, town's property insurance in any way?
It would, but we have a thousand dollar deductible.
Yep. So you do, you can pay that. We did that with the shed, or the ticket booth at Bunginut and we did get paid back.
Yeah, all but the thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's disturbing.
So I guess on the Kennybug line, it's entirely up to you guys, you know, leave it as it is and just go with it or?
No.
Expect more of the same.
Yeah, but even, even the money in that line wouldn't cover that incident.
Right.
But not to say it's gonna happen again.
Right, and it's the, it's the, you know, the what ifs and, and how do you know? You know, maybe nothing happens next year. It's really hard to tell.
We did have where they spray painted some bad words.
They did.
Yeah, they did. They spray painted bad words on the road.
And on the kiosk.
And on the kiosk. And on the homeowners, next door, the homeowners association sign. Yeah, we had that incident. Tom did a great job cleaning up. You didn't even notice, right?
So I noticed that our road commissioner, as an employee of the town, does things above and beyond that this, that this other person would do, would be doing as well. And so, yeah, I mean.
Yeah. He's actually working on the building issue right now. So. So do you wanna leave it as is? Cause you guys had asked about it.
That is meeting the twenty-two ninety total.
Total of twenty-two ninety, yep, because we still have to do the bacterial analysis. We beefed that up, so it's being done twice a month now, I think.
Once a month, I thought.
Was it, is it one?
We did do it extra because there was an incident with the water this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember that. I think that's fine.
Okay. Anything else on page fifteen?
I have some questions.
Okay.
About the next two lines.
Yeah.
And again, this is just looking at it statistically. We have, you know, thirty-one-thirty for transfer station. Twenty-three, we budgeted fifteen, we didn't use any of it. Twenty-four, we budgeted twenty-six-twenty, we didn't use any of it. We budgeted thirty-one-thirty-two for this year.
Oh, we're gonna use it.
So.
So the, the vermin have gone rampant up there, getting into stuff. So we had to call a couple of times. On, yeah.
Okay. And if it's getting used, I have no problem with it, but.
Yeah, no, it's, we had to call them and maybe I did, just didn't take it out of the twenty-four in the right line. We had, we had called them last year because they're getting pretty thick.
So do they come regularly as like a service contract where they come?
When they get really bad, Randy calls them.
But do they do a preventative?
Uh, not, they're not doing a preventative now. But, so you have to keep switching it up. The guys have tried to do it themselves before they, which is where we're starting to call the people. But we also have a hard time scheduling, getting them in here.
That's what I'm saying. So I, so I would love if we could reach out to a pest control vendor and have an actual contract in place where they're willing to visit. And then reactive, right? So they're just like a monthly, they do an inspection, they check out things, they rebate or do whatever.
Yeah, I like it.
If there's a problem, then they will respond.
I like it.
I think that's a good idea.
We're just building this, this job description as we go along.
Getting into that situation because at least you have a hard time.
Yeah, no, I love it.
Is because you're not on their list, like.
Yeah. No, I totally get it.
They're not hanging out waiting for people to call them.
I get it. So transfer station miscellaneous repairs, sometimes we've had to use it, sometimes we haven't, we don't know. We put the fire extinguisher inspections in here, which I did twice. I see it, Amber.
Oh, well, actually, I didn't pick that up because I was thinking one was the inspection of them and one was the replacement or recharge. So I didn't.
Okay, yeah, you're right. You're right.
Well, dang it, I was about to bring that up.
So I was like, oh, okay, that could be two legit different services, you know, you come.
It is.
Inspection is one, replacement and recharging is another.
I'm sure we're gonna have to have some recharges.
I was about to get like.
Cause I don't think it's been done in.
Yeah, I, I didn't even think twice about that one.
I don't think it's been done in like forever, so.
And that's.
Yeah, that should be in a contract, I feel like.
Yeah, can we?
With, you know, like with Lindy, that should be in a contract too, like they just come.
It is for here. I don't think it ever has been for there.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that, that would be a good, good idea for.
Yep. Well, this is the first time it's appearing in your budget, so.
So they're not inspected up there? Okay.
See, this is, these are the things, and I keep looking at or going, add that to your list. Cause we're building this, building this job description.
Several years ago, the code enforcement used to do the checking of the fire extinguishers in this building and that was when we owned Cousin School, Cousin School, and I'm not sure where else.
Cause ever since I've been here, it's been those guys.
I'm not, you know, that was a long time ago.
No, that's awesome.
That's, cause it was a problem, because it wasn't getting done, so we solved it that way. That's how we solved it.
This is why we need that. Anything else on fifteen? Moving along. Page sixteen. Do you, I don't have anything on that. Cause it's mowing, so. Pretty much contractual. Page seventeen is plowing for the most part. Mostly contractual. That we did add extra plowing for special events at Bunginut.
Do we have to plow?
For parking.
Not this year.
No, well, some, some years are lucky.
I hope to be doing it at some point this winter.
Yeah. I know my husband's the same way, so. Buildings and grounds, waste services. I corrected, if you look at page eighteen, we looked at this last time. There was a formula error under the ice rink trash. I fixed that. And on roadside pickup at the very bottom, I changed that back to a thousand.
That's another one of those. I don't know if we're gonna use it, but it's there if we need it.
Okay. Anything else there? Okay, page nineteen. We kinda looked this over last time we were here. At the very bottom, Amber had asked if we had enough information for the electricity at Kennybug Pond. And I have ten months with seventy-one dollars being the top, so I've changed that down to eight fifty-two.
Okay.
Oh, always.
Thank you.
Anything else on page nineteen?
I'm curious in a way, it's been colder lately and windier than it has been in previous winters as of late. And I'm curious if, a lot of times when, when it's really windy and cold, it causes the building to use more energy to, to stay warm. And, and I'm wondering, I, I was, wanted to look at where we were at. Have we been, do you, have you noticed that we've been using more this year?
No. I, so at this point, no. Because we usually get one to three deliveries here in this building of propane. And I've only, I've paid one propane bill this year. So I'm expecting another one, so that'll be our one to one and a half, I mean, two to two and a half. At this point, I have not.
Oh, and this building's been changed to propane from oil in the past five years or so?
Before me, so.
Was it?
Longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for the thought. You're welcome, thanks for the, the thought. Page twenty. Any thoughts on that?
Let me see. What is? At the bottom, fifty-one roads, sixty-six seventy supply signs.
Yeah.
It seems like over the past three years, we've averaged a little bit under three thousand dollars there.
Yep.
So five grand could be get by with the three grand there.
And still leave the barriers at two?
Oh, yeah.
I would say you could.
Yeah, just looking at the previous three years.
I'm assuming that's for like stop signs.
Yep, stop signs and.
Road signs, street signs get stolen a lot, used to get stolen a lot, I don't know if they still do a lot.
I mean, Tom tries to use whatever we have in stock in inventory as much as he can, if we have it. Otherwise, we order it, and I think the only issue, we've had a couple stolen, a couple spray painted ones, so we probably could get by with three thousand. I don't, usually he updates me when he has to go and add a sign. We did add some beach signs along South Wadaworo, because people were going to private residence, thinking it was Kennybuck Pond, so. You know, we'll do things like that if we need to, and that's pretty much, I can't look at anything extravagant.
Can I counter at thirty-five hundred, because the shipping for those has been, especially those posts, I have, has been. If you've ever come down here when they're delivering, they park right in the middle of the road. But the shipping has been quite a bit, just your thoughts?
Go thirty-five as opposed to the five thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Still savings.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like it, good job. So on this one, the changes I'm going to make is, I'm going to remove the eight fifty from, for the striping of the parking lot here. And I'm going to reduce the five thousand in signs to thirty-five hundred. Do you want to move buildings and grounds on to the budget committee, because we have a meeting next week? Making, with me making those two changes before you see it?
I'm in support of that, yes.
Okay. All of you.
I as well.
Okay.
I agree with Dave.
Don't agree with me?
I agree with you, too.
Do you guys want to keep going, or you want to call it?
I would say I'll call it.
We're on a roll. I live in an altered universe this week, I just want you to know, so it makes no difference to me.
I'm going to call it if everyone's okay with that.
I'm good.
Well, next up is transfer station, so.
And we'll be meeting in two weeks again for another workshop anyway, with a meeting in between, so.
Yes.
It's all good.
And you're lucky people, my voice, my voice held out.
No, I appreciate you guys, I mean, it's nice that.
Are you happy?
That's how I got you.
I didn't know how it got there, I was like, I looked down and I gave them a show and.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I take.